2014, and I'll have a call to look at it. At 7:04. Let's start the Pledge of Legions, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Lego, please roll call, please.
Mr. Sisson.
Here.
Mr. Kachasik.
Here.
Dr. Koschko.
Here.
Mr. Leonard is absent. Mr. Noel. Mr. Noel?
Yeah.
And Mr. Newman?
Here.
Mr. Petrusy?
Here.
Mr. Stovall?
Here.
Dr. Trey?
Here.
You'd have a corner, Madam President.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lego. At this time, I'd like to hand it over to Mr. Sisson, who has some sad news to share with us.
Thank you, Madam President. I was informed this week that one of our seventh graders, Ms. Hannah Philiger, she's been battling leukemia for a number of years. And she passed away on Monday. Hannah is such a gentle soul. Always remember her, talking to her teachers. Sweet, caring, very considerate of others, and a real music lover. I've talked to a couple of her friends also on the phone. She liked to go to the park and ride bikes and just a real support to her friends. When she, she's only been in the district for a couple of years. When she came here, she was already had been diagnosed and I was in contact with mom. What always struck me about her is how resilient she was. You know, here's a 12-year-old girl battling a life-threatening illness. And she was always, you know, always smiling, always happy. And that's how I'm going to remember her. Always positive. So I, if I'd like to have a moment of silence in honor of Hannah, thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to have a, may I have a motion to approve the minutes of May 12, 2014?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Petrusy.
Second.
Second by Dr. Trey. Question.
Question being called for. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried. At this time, I'm handing it over to Dr. Harris for information.
Sure. A couple of our retired teachers who we recognize at the June meeting, Mrs. Stephens, Mrs. Lay, Mrs. Rubright, and Mr. Ernest, and thank you, that's the board. I just wanted to acknowledge that. They really were appreciative of the reception and everything they, we said about them during the night and everything they did for the district. They really appreciated the service and being able to work for Penn Trafford. So I just want to let you know they appreciated that. Also, I have the books available that we are going to approve tonight. We've made an effort over the last couple of years only to approve. We've been buying more materials, items, technology versus books. But we do have some desk copies that we are approving. So they're on the agenda. And as always, we always have books available at the administration if you ever want to come and check out a copy. Later this evening, we will be doing a building presentation. Missero and our architects will be here. But we're going to actually do that at the very end of the meeting. Because if we do it right now, we won't be able to get through all of our items on their meeting. So it will be done at the very end of the meeting, just to give everyone all that information. And that's all I have.
All right, thank you, Dr. Harris. It's now time for audience recognition. The following rules are in effect. You must state your name, address, and group affiliation, if any. Your statement will be limited to five minutes in duration. All statements shall be directed to the president, and no participant may address or question a board member individually. They may interrupt your statement if your statement is too lengthy, personally direct, abusive, obscene, irrelevant. I have a list of residents, well, I have two residents, actually, who wish to address the board. Your name will be called in the order in which you sign up. First, Sally Bradley.
Okay, thank you. And this is in response to your, yeah, my, oh, your response to input from the public. However, I don't forget anything I want to say. But first of all, whether or not you should go beyond the 32 million that you agreed to, if you voted on in a public meeting, I don't think you should do that. That's, it's a lack of continuity, and it doesn't give a good effort on the part of what people think of the school board. Just like on Monday, I had a phone call asking me what the bids were going out for. And I honestly could not say what the bids were for. So I suggested to this person, they go back and read Georgia's paper, and I said the bids would be listed there, and they could find out. So I think you need to stay within that 32 million. Secondly, on that, I don't think we can afford to go more than that. We have issues coming up. We don't have a teacher's contract yet, to my knowledge. So I don't know what that's going to cost. Some of the add-ons I question, like, whether or not we need a skylight in the library. A question, if we enlarge the pool deck, where's the space coming from? I mean, it's got to come from somewhere. What are we getting rid of?
We're getting, if we enlarge the pool deck, the space is going, we're taking space from the existing mat room, weight room area, and the mat room would be relocated to the current auxiliary gym. And that's the assumption that we're going to add a, put an annex on the building.
So, thank you. So we're not going to take away from our wrestlers?
Wrestlers will be relocated.
But they'll still have the same amount of space?
No, they will not have the same amount of space.
Do they have more?
They will have less.
I just want to be concerned that we're fair to all our athletes.
Right, we certainly studied that, and we have approximately, in the low twenties, the number of wrestlers that we have in the program, and the varsity wrestlers, I should say. And the current mat room that we have is very, very large. And I'm sure I love having that much space, but...
And Scott, too, if I could clarify a little bit, the current wrestling room is very large, but it's a very odd shape. It's very long, it's very narrow. The new room that they're getting is a more usable space. It's, it's a much nicer rectangle, so they might be losing a little bit of square footage, but, but the usable space works better for them.
Okay, so we're not favoring one group over another?
Hey, what is the square footage difference?
Boy, I can try and figure that out.
It's a lot. It's, it's less, I don't know how much less, but I can tell you that the wrestling program, as I said, there's in the, in the low twenties, number of varsity kids that I know, I used to wrestle back in, in the eighties. We had, you know, sixty, seventy kids on the varsity team. So the size of the wrestling program is significantly less than what it was twenty, thirty years ago.
Do we have any idea why that's the case? I mean, and I fear that might be another question.
There's a number of reasons. I mean, it's just, it's different times.
Sally, I can tell you, I'm very interested in the wrestling program, too. I've wrestled many years, and have stayed involved with the program, and I've talked to a number of the coaches and so on. And the space is not really an issue. They realize there's not as many kids, but it's a, it's an excellent space. It's, it's got area to display, trophies and activities, and it's just got more of a, the plan for it is much more, much, much more exciting. And the loss of a little bit of ground space is not, not hurting them. They're not upset about it.
Okay.
In any way, shape, or form, by far, much more positive. And where we're going now, if we have the annex built into this whole thing, it's going to be fine. I feel very confident.
Okay, sounds good. Sorry, sorry about this, Nick. I don't see the need for an auxiliary gym at this time. Even if Plan, if PlanCon does become available, it's still not going to affect the cost of an auxiliary gym. We're going to still have to eat it. And I, I support extracurricular activities as much as anyone in this school district. And I think there's a value for it, as I've said many times to other people. If we keep three students out of trouble because of an activity, we've saved money. At that time, group homes were three, $500 a day. I'm sure they're more than that now. So it doesn't take very much to have a savings. But I don't know that we can afford an auxiliary gym. The idea that, well, we can have two events at the same time, people can only watch one. Could be a parking problem. Yeah, we're at any, what, seventy-some spaces for parking? But if you have two events, that's going to still create a problem. I know, I've been at the school, and we have swimming and bath, or swimming in a gym activity. It's hard to find a parking space, or the gym in an auditorium. So I have a concern about that. The other thing is, if we have a problem with the deck, the towel on the floor, the swimming pool, or the swimming pool, or the lockers, let's fix it. But I don't think we need to tear up the whole thing. And if we have a problem with the tennis court, let's make it safe for our kids. No argument there. And am I allowed to, and I know over the time, can I say something totally unrelated to renovation? A suggestion I'd like to make, with football coming up in approximately two months, we were successful in getting the students off the hillside in the stadium, but then we created another problem, and somebody else was here a couple of years ago about the problem. It's difficult walking on the track to get from the stadium to the parking lot. There are kids all over the place. I know there are times I've sat in the car to watch a game rather than having to fight the crowd to get back to my car. My suggestion, if it could be done, either get like a snow fence, that plastic stuff, or the yellow barrier tape, put it down the center of the walkway, on the state, on the field side, you can stand, and on the other side, you walk. You wouldn't have people running into you, bumping you, because someone's going to get hurt sometime. Then when you get down by the concession stand, an area to be in line, and an area where they can walk, but no standing there. And maybe the means, bringing in bleachers from either Penn Middle School or Trafford Middle, and putting in the end zone toward Harrison City. But just a suggestion, it would be safe, safer for everybody. I mean, we got them off the hillside, but they're, now they're all over the place on the track, not being the people. Thank you, thanks for the extra time.
All right, thank you. Okay, next is Mr. Ralph Powell.
Thank you. My name's Ralph Powell. I've been living in the district for about fifteen years now. I have four daughters, all going through various stages here, Penn Trafford. Time to talk. My comments will be fairly brief. I'm just here, more or less, in support of the renovations. Very happy with what's happened and what's happening. First of all, about something you already did, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but the sound system was already finished in the auditorium, is that right?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Correct.
I could tell. And I don't know anything about theater, but my daughters do. And if, if any of you went to Shrek, I thought it was a wonderful performance. And more importantly, you know, you could actually hear the kids when they sang, because previous to that, the, the voices would be breaking up and things like, so just a small thing, maybe, but it's already had a big impact. And all these people from the community who came to see Shrek, there were thousands of people there, they broke a record in terms of attendance. So just a minute thing that most people don't even know it happened as part of this renovation, had an impact. Had an impact on me, had an impact on my children, had an impact on the community. So thank you for that, and all the other things you're doing with the arts. It's, it's wonderful. I want to talk about the annex. I think that it's needed in a big way. I can understand anyone's point that says, don't raise taxes and don't spend more money. I get it. I'm a financial advisor, believe me. I'm the first one to tell people not to spend more money. But the bottom line is, it's a need. It's a need in the community. It's something that could be ignored, it could be pushed off. Sure, we'll still all exist, the basketball players still have somewhere to play, we'll get by. But we're not proving ourselves, we're not moving ahead. We're status quo, or maybe even slipping against other districts that we compete with for, for future students. And that's one of the things I think of, are we growing, or are we dying as a community? Are we moving ahead, or are we moving backward? You never stay in the same. You're either moving ahead, or you're moving backward. Well, this helps us to move ahead. The other thing is, it's not just the, the high school athletes that'll benefit from the annex. You're going to have more gym time than for other kids in the community. I'm a member of PTBA, I've been coaching there for years and years, and I can tell you that it's always a struggle to get gym time for both the in-house kids and the travel kids. It is always a struggle. And we're so thankful to the district for working with us and helping us get gym time. We need it. We have no other place to play, okay? But I'll take my travel kids down to Turtle Creek, that's where we have to practice, Turtle Creek, half the time, okay? No offense to anybody, but we need the gyms, believe me, we do. I don't know how many gyms Norwin has, I know they're a little bit bigger district, I know they have a bigger tax base, but I bet you they have seven, or eight, or nine full gyms. We have, truth be told, two. We have Trafford, and we have this gym, this high school gym. That's it. Penn Middle, you can't even play a full game on it. I have to extend lines and do all kind of weird things to have a game at Penn Middle. And no offense, I love Penn Middle, I've been there, but, but the fact is, we need more gyms. So that's important. And don't forget, it doesn't just affect the high school, I mean, there's probably 500 families in PTBA. All those kids in some way or another can benefit from that. The other thing, the physical fitness facilities they're going in, anybody can benefit from that. The young and the old alike, anybody can come and use those facilities, as I understand it. I don't know what the terms will be or anything, but they'll be a nice facility to use, that's the important thing here. The pool, same way. There's, there's swimming programs for all sorts of citizens, and not just the swim team, okay? So there's all sorts of segments of the community that'll benefit from that. And to address your point, I appreciate you bringing up the, the point about the, the men's and the women's games that we try to have at the same time, with Franklin, with Norwin, with Hempel, with our rivals, which is so much fun. If any of you have been to that, it's really a blast. But we can't do both the varsity and JV at the same time. So the JV kids don't get to play that night. Well, that's kind of too bad. And I know everybody can only watch one thing, but believe me, if you have a kid playing JV, you want to watch that game, okay? And every, and so everybody has a different vested interest. But I'm really in favor of those, those things. And then the other thing to note is the robotics lab, I understand, and maybe expanding the CAD lab, those are two burgeoning technologies, that if we can increase our capabilities here, that gives our kids a chance when they go to college, if they're in sciences, to have a leg up. I have a daughter who's in, a bit of an interest in architecture. Well, CAD is very important in that. So she's going to need to learn those skills at this school, okay? So great, great additions there potentially as well. The other thing I just wanted to note is, I appreciate your balanced and conservative nature through all this. This isn't willy-nilly. This isn't just some crazy process, let's go put up a bunch of buildings. You're being cautious, you're being careful. Thank you for not raising taxes recently. Thank you for keeping it within the realm of reasonableness. I appreciate the tenor there on that side, too, but we do need growth. We need the expansion, we need the annex. And last but not least, interest rates are still at all-time lows. Don't, don't pass that up. I mean, we don't know where they're going to go in the future, nobody in the world knows. You ask five economists, they'll give you five different answers. But the fact of the matter is, they're still, money is still very cheap. Now's the time, but in my mind, this, these are very important pros, these are modest, modest, modest renovations. In your neighborhood, you would like the fact that somebody's building on, adding on, investing in their properties. That's what we're doing as a community. So that's all I had to say. I appreciate all of your efforts on that and everything you do for our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. May I have a motion to approve the treasurer's report in the high school extracurricular fund?
Second.
Second by Mr. Petrusy.
Second.
Second by Mr. Petrusy. Question.
Okay. Question being called for. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried. May I have a motion to approve the list of bills for the month of June?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Kachasik. Second by Mr. Noel.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried. Any old business?
We have none, Madam President.
Okay, we had a brief executive session to discuss personnel issues. All right, new business. Dr. Koschko, athletics and extracurricular.
Thank you, Madam President. To move to accept the following resignation, effective immediately unless otherwise noted. Ron Evans, baseball head coach. Ashley Hildoroff, saxophone instructor. Christina Nowak, color guard instructor. Sanders Stutz for two positions, spring musical assistant sponsor, effective June 1st, and co-business manager, effective June 10th. Judith Ferentz, co-business manager, effective June 10th. Beverly Rubright, resigning from all extracurricular positions. Laurie Carmack, Trace sponsors, effective May 15th. David Ernett, resigning from all extracurricular positions. Rosemary Knapp, department chair for library science, K-12. Susan McCabe, department chair for science, K-5. And Ryan Marasti, declined summer grass cutting position, effective May 27th.
Second by Mr. Noel. Question.
Question being called for. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to employ the following personnel. New employment is contingent upon the receipt of all necessary documentation and acceptance of Act 34-115 and 114 waivers in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania within 30 days. Rob Guttwald, saxophone instructor. Ashley Hildoroff, color guard instructor.
Second.
Second by Mr. Noel. Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to approve the following volunteer coaches. All coaches, volunteers must have Act 34-151 and Act 114 waivers on file with the athletic director. Jacob Byers, boys and girls volunteer volleyball coach. Doug Kelly, ninth grade boys volunteer basketball coach. Tyler Wykoff, boys and girls volunteer assistant volleyball coach.
Second.
Second by Mr. Petrusy. Question.
Question being called for. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to approve the opening of three varsity baseball assistant coaching positions at Penn Trafford High School due to the resignation of Mr. Ron Evans as varsity baseball head coach. This is according to district policy.
Second.
Second by Mr. Noel. Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
That'll be all, Madam President.
Thank you, Dr. Koschko. Mr. Kachasik, budget and finance.
Yes, before I open up the motion, Madam President, I'd like to entertain a discussion regarding what that millage rate to be. I'd like to start it off by, after careful consideration of the situation this face in the district, I had some information that Brett had provided me today. Based on that information, I'm recommending, at least for myself, a two-mill increase. We're looking over the next five years, please Brett, correct me if I'm wrong, of continuous Peers increases. In order to meet those financial obligations, you have to raise additional millage. I think this district has done a fantastic job over the years of cutting. I think we're one of the third best, I believe, in this, in the counties for, per pupil spending. So we've done our due diligence as far as that's concerned. Before we start cutting programs that I'm sure we would regret, that would be my recommendation, I'll open it up for discussion. And Brett, if you wanted to comment on any of that. I think two mills now would be a good start, and far, far from where we need to be. My, my, what I'm afraid of, anything less than that, and you're right back to where you are next year in the same situation, and still further from the, from the M-game. And I think, long-term, for the district, and that's, I'm sure, years from now, you're going to need additional millage for a future building project, if that, you know, at least you want to give future building, future boards the ability to at least consider that. So to me, without addressing the white elephant in the room, or whatever that term is, you need to tackle that problem and put a long-term solution in for it. I know we all hope, and we, and we keep looking to Harrisburg for a solution, it never comes. And unfortunately, for a lot of local school boards across the county, this becomes our problem to deal with. And this is a bill that we have to pay whether we like it or not. And if you don't pay it, it comes right out of your subsidy, so you're forced one way or the other. So I'll open it up, and let the board members for comment.
Brett, you want to speak first, or you?
Well, I, I'll just comment that Mr. Kachasik is absolutely correct about the Peers. If you just project a modest 3% district-wide salary increase over the next five years, we're going to need approximately two year, two mills to cover that next year, almost two mills the following year, and then one mill each of the next three years until we get close to the top of the spike. So that is a very serious issue that we still are addressing. I know that the state revenue figures are down from the projections, so there's some uncertainty about what the actual state subsidy will be this year. I know that the governor and his people have said that it's very likely that we won't have a budget by June 30th because of some of their concerns. So when we, you know, when we put this budget together, we based it on one mill, but certainly going to two mills would put us in a better financial position. And the effect on the average taxpayer is about an additional $30 a year. So I don't think it's an unreasonable suggestion to go to two mills.
All right, sorry, one quick follow-up before maybe Nick comments or somebody else. What is the index for, for us this year?
The index is...
If we raise to the allowable index?
Well, it would be about 2.07, so we'd be right to the index.
Thank you.
And Brett, your $30 figure, that was the cost of the additional mill, or the total?
Cost of the additional mill. Each mill is about $30.
So about $60.
So about $60. $5 a month, right.
Okay, as you, in the past, and I don't know, I want to word this way, I've done it before, I've always been for increasing millage strictly for the future renovations and putting in capital improvements, because we have some administration buildings over 100 years old, our McCullough Building, this next year is the 91st year, and Penn is now approaching their 80th year, and you know they're past their prime, and they are going to replace tonight. And how we got the nine mills that we are now enjoying for renovation on this building right here, we had to bite the bull back in the 90s, and we raised, and Sally was on the board then, and we raised nine mills over about a five or six-year period. And again, it was hard pill to swallow, but we were growing by 1,000 students at that time, and we had to enlarge. And we did, and it worked out, but it's not very friendly. There's no doubt about it. And I know, we caught grief, and right now, and, you know, I'm, I'm for one mill for Peers and one mill for renovations, set aside for capital improvements, but the way that Phil stated, he wanted to hold two mills for Peers, and Peers is not going away. And Peers is, and we've lost, and, Mr. Lego, how much have we, since Governor Corbett's been in office, how much has our, our state subsidy been reduced now, total, in the past? This would be his fourth year.
If we would have stayed at the level of state subsidy when he came in, we would be about $4 million ahead.
$4 million, so, and we're not the only district. This is district, this is statewide.
Correct.
And so it's, it's not easy. We've been living off of the attrition with our retirees, the money we saved, but now that is going to be gone. And it's, our next retiree is, she's in her 29th year, and she goes to full term for 35 years before retirement, that's six years of no attrition from her retirement. Now, and I'm not picking on her, I'm just saying, that's, that's who's next in line, that's all. That's all, I'm sorry. But I would, I, well, I'm definitely for supportive, too, because, and plus, our fund balance is down to, what'd you say, about 2%?
Yeah. At the end of this year, if the federal funds continue to not flow for the access program, or if they are reduced, would be at about a total of $3 million between both our reserved and our unreserved.
$3 million, $50 million turns out to about, what's that, 15 and 30 is...
Well, that's 6.
6%.
But a big chunk of that's in reserves.
Yeah, in reserve, pretty much.
Most of that's in reserves, correct.
So what's the...
We're going to have the reserve. The reserve at the end of this year will be the same as it was last year, it's 2.4 as it was last year. It's 2.4 million.
How about the unreserved?
It'll be about $750,000. That's still up in the air because we're still crunching some of those federal numbers. But if the numbers don't come through, we could be as low as $750,000.
On our unreserved fund balance.
And what, what percent is that?
Well, that's...
Less than, less than about one, one...
Less than 2%.
Yeah, about one point, so our fund...
6.7.
And I mean, again, we're not the only school district. I read one neighboring school district is $2 million in the red, and we're $700,000 in the black. It's $700,000 out of $50 million yearly budget is, is not, is not very healthy. So, I'm not, I would like to put one mill for capital, but we have to put two mills in just to, for Peasers, just to help out with that. No, I'd support that. And I think, I think everybody should express themselves. I know some board members that...
Just keep in mind that the one mill that we have in the proposal is for operating expenses for the current year. It's not reserved for anything next year.
Okay, yeah.
So...
So, it'd be one mill for that and one mill for Peasers, then, what you're saying?
If that's your recommendation, if that's what the board votes for, that's what we would do.
The second mill.
The second mill would go...
Well, the first mill is booked in front of operations.
Correct, right. The second mill would go, we could put that in reserve for Peasers, yes.
I'll keep on this side of the table for a minute. I find myself in a weird position saying this, but I'm also supporting two mills for multiple reasons. The biggest reason being, the Peasers issue is just not going away. And from what I've seen from other districts, I think we've actually been ahead of it and in front of it earlier than most, and put more money aside than most. And yet, we're still looking at a very large overhang. Mr. Katsasik's right, that bill does get paid. You know, there is no avoidance of that. And it just is what it is. So, from that standpoint, we have to deal with Peasers. You know, from what you said, Mr. Lego, that's seven mills over a two, four, five-year period. That's a lot of millage to deal with just with Peasers. You're not even dealing with future building projects. You're not even dealing with future operating increases. That's kind of a scary situation. When I first got on this board, I believe it was the first year I was on the board, there was a, Nick, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but it was about a $7 million increase.
Seven is correct, yes.
And it was stunning. But it, that came from hope being a strategy, which is not strategy. And then you get a situation where the fund balance was...
Down to a list, just, just what we're doing right now.
Yeah, exactly. The fund balance not at the point any significant. If a boiler had gone down, we were gonna have to go get a line of credit to put a boiler on the school. And at the time, and finally, there was a reaction, and it was an attempt by a lot of good board members to be as frugal and fair to taxpayers as possible. Well, that ability to do doesn't even exist anymore. If you put off this problem and you don't get ahead of this millage and deal with the bills that are due, you cannot do seven mills in one year when the financial reality finally does hit. So, I don't like it, and I have a hard time personally dealing with it. I don't see a better way, even if you hold operations at zero. The two mills is still what you need for, for the Peasers. So, I'm in the same position, reluctantly, but realistically supporting that increase.
If I could speak next, I would also say that I support the two-mill increase. My reasons are generally the same as my colleagues, but I add another dimension which is quite fearful, and that relates to the federal component of participation. Up to this point, they've been consistent, but we've been threatened by the access program, which is a very excellent program that supports our more needy students related to their, their many, many needs. And unfortunately, we've had a reduction in federal funding related to the access, which has dropped several, several hundred thousand dollars over the last couple of years. In addition to that, we were not provided the money last year, which was well over $350,000. Is that correct?
The current, for the current year.
For the current.
We got the full allotment last year. We haven't got anything yet for this year. We're hoping to get some funds released, but as of right now, we, we're not sure.
But we've been faced with constant reduction. Is that...
We've budgeted for a significant decrease for next year as well.
Which is 40%, 50% something like that.
I, it's close to like, eliminate 50%.
So, we're talking about a mill probably there at that capacity. And that's something, you know, we just got, we're gonna have to do it on our own. Obviously, none of my disappointment related to the inactivity of our legislature at the state level, and not being able to hold their fair share of supporting our educational programs and throwing us all onto us, related to building, related to everything. And now, we have the federal government failing to provide us where we also need it. We gotta do it. We need the two mills, and I support it.
And Phil is right. It's not the most popular answer, but it's the right answer when you're looking at future planning and what is coming down the line. Over the last couple of years, this auditorium has tried very hard not to spend, not to raise mills, and we looked at every avenue to cut and find ways to save money. And we've been very frugal, and we've been very cost-effective. And we're at the point now where there is not many more ways to find additional savings. And with the Peasers and the bill that lies ahead of us, there's not many more avenues that lie ahead of us to find savings. So, I'm very grateful that you're actually proposing that. And I think it's the way that I would urge all board members to make the, to support the two mills. Thank you, Phil.
Well, it's not for a lack of trying. If you think, a month ago, we sat here and we had two mills budgeted in just to make the budget work. So, we went back, we asked for the administration to give us some other, now they're getting very hard cuts as opposed to just attritional cuts. Somehow, without jeopardizing extracurriculars, special activity type stuff, they were able to save a mill. So, now we're back down to a mill. And I would be for this thing if we do designate it as one mill towards the operating, the other one to Peasers. Because we have to, we have to pay for it. And unfortunately, Mr. Patruci, I don't think building is on the forefront right now.
No, I, you're right. You're right. That's true. That's true.
Probably the only way I would support it is that it is earmarked for that sole purpose of helping us pay for the increases that just keep coming.
I can respect that.
I agree with the increase. I do not agree with the two mill. I've said that in some previous discussions that we had with regards to, I believe that, no, that I would be asking for will be directly toward the budget. So, I think from an operation perspective, I still, other board members can disagree, I still think there's some opportunity that needs to be evaluated and looked at in terms of how we approach things within the district. And there's a litany of items that were put out there. There's opportunity. Granted, they're not easy decisions, but we're talking about raising taxes for folks, and in some cases, a $60 increase, for some might not be a big issue, but for others are. And I'm in support of one mill to be directed toward the Peasers because of various reasons that folks have already stated. But I will not support a two-mill increase.
Rich, don't he?
Yeah. I was waiting for everyone else to speak first.
Oh, yeah, you, Rich, you...
Up until this evening, I have always been supportive of the one-mill increase. I know that, as everybody said, we've, we've cut pretty much to the bone, and it's very left to pick off anymore. Coming into the renovation project, it's hard to raise taxes as well, but in light of hearing what our fund balance is, it really scares me. I agree with Mr. Stovar that I would support the two-mill increase with the one mill dedicated to the Peasers.
Okay, well, I, I agree with Rich. He pretty much summed it all. The only thing I would like to add is, it was a very, like Bruce said, it was a very hard decision to make. I know there's a lot of seniors in our community that are on a very fixed income. However, when we looked at the list of options that were given to us to, as options to cut, I felt that they had a great, they may have a great impact on the quality of our education. And one of the things that keeps the house values high in Penn Trafford is our quality of education. We're number one on test scores. We want to stay number one. We want people to come to Penn Trafford. You want your property values to keep going up. So, that being said, my number one goal as a school board member is to protect the education of our children, to make sure they are truly getting the best education we could offer them. With the bills that we have, the low fund balance that we have, I feel we have no choice but to go to the two mills.
I would just like to add one thing. That our fund balance is much more important than future renovations. So, I'll just, I, I'll concede this time, but I still think we have to some future renovations, but the fund balance is way too low.
I just want to clarify, I didn't agree with Mr. Stovar, that second mill to be designated for the Peasers. I don't know if I was clear with that.
Absolutely.
That being said, I have a logistics question that, I guess that's what the lawyer's here for. Okay, now, when we...
What's the math?
What's that?
So, there's some math that's down here.
Oh, well, yeah, that, that is true. But my, okay, if we, and I, and I know right now, and I, that we would have a seven to one vote for the two mill. Do we vote initially just for the two mill, and then is there a second vote that says one mill for the Peasers and one mill for the general fund? How, is that two separate bills?
You can condition, no.
I think you would want to tie them together so that...
Well, that's my question legitimately. How are you supposed to do that?
You can vote for the two-mill increase and allocate a particular...
All in one vote?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't think Mr. Katsasik officially put a motion on the floor.
Nope.
Oh, I know that. I know that. And that's what I'm getting the question, before he puts the motion. I mean, how that motion should be worded, I guess.
Hey Brett, I just need to clarify something else before I read the motion. So, when I first made the recommendation for two mills, I wanted, is hopefully, I was crystal clear on both of those mills going to Peasers, okay? It sounds like there's a majority of the board enough to split that to general budget and, and to the Peasers. So, I'm gonna proceed with the two mills recommendation, or excuse me, our recommendation motion. But just wanted noted that my recommendation, as I said, and when I first started, would have been two mills toward the Peasers. Okay, I recommend that the 2014-15, well, let me stop there for a second. I want to thank the board members for their deliberation and thoughtful consideration in a very difficult subject matter. And I appreciate every one of your input. And hopefully, things will get much better financially. But thank you for your, your time, your input. I recommend that the 2014-15 school district budget and schedule is in a total amount of $49,703,211, tentatively adopted at the Information Committee meeting held on May 5th, 2014, and properly advertised in accordance with the school laws of Pennsylvania, be adopted and filed in the official board minutes to include the following taxes as shown in the budget. I would assume, Brett, that's 76.
Be 76.85, and Trafford would be 16.36. That's exactly what they were in the preliminary budget. So, we're going back to those numbers.
Real estate tax at a rate of 76.85 mills. That's 7.685 on each $100 of a $100 assessed valuation of property, taxable property. The real estate tax for the Allegheny County portion located in Trafford Borough is 16.36 mills per capita tax as listed, Act 511 taxes as listed. Everything else as listed.
Well, there will be an adjustment.
I'm sorry, excuse me.
There will be an adjustment to the 6,000 local revenue sources. I don't have the exact figure. It'll be approximately $275,000 additionally more, but I have to do some calculations in the state budget form. So, we'll get those corrected numbered, but we're approximately increasing revenue to 49,809,377. But that's approximate. We'll get the official number once I get the state budget corrected. And it'll be part of the official minutes.
Okay, thank you.
The expenditures do not change. Fund balance will also be adjusted based on that number, so that'll increase as well.
Mr. Solicitor, will that serve as a proper motion?
We change these figures here. He said it right. He said this is what you said before.
All right, so you get the millages correct.
Yeah.
The only numbers that need adjusting.
That's fine. That was the only, because I didn't have it for him.
Right.
Yes, thank you. Second.
Second by Mr. New.
Question.
I do have a question.
Sure.
After all the discussion. If, now, you've made a comment, Brett, Mr. Lego, that the state budget may not be finalized until after June 30th.
Correct.
Now, if we would get, by some bizarre miracle, a windfall.
Yes.
Do we, and I know that's an extremely unlikely situation, do we have the option at that time, when that budget passes, to reopen our budget and read, examine the tax rate?
Well, I can't say that with 100% certainty, but every time that the legislature has passed the budget after July 1st that included additional funds, they allow districts to reopen their budget. So, most likely, the answer would be yes.
Okay. All right. Any other questions, comments? All right, questions being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
No.
Okay, I was gonna get you no. All opposed, no?
No.
Okay.
You should, you should pull. Remember, this is, this is not dedicating, this is dedicating both mills to Peasers.
No.
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 He said, no, 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 clarification, Rich. That was clarification of my point. There was enough board members who, who were for the split. So, my vote was still yes for the two. I just to clarify.
One mill for Peasers. We're gonna do a separate motion then for the split?
No.
No.
Brett said just do one motion and it was split it on the way.
We'll include it as part of the motion, that one mill is for operations. Right. I mean, he did not read that specifically.
That's what they...
So, I would, I would prefer it to be part of the motion than read.
You ordered then. One mill for Peasers.
All right, I'll go back to the, let's see, real estate tax at a rate of 76.85, which would mean an increase of two mills. One mill for the general budget and one mill for Peasers.
Still second.
You second it?
Bruce seconded it.
Question.
All right, I guess we vote again. Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no?
No.
No. All right, I guess I...
I have it.
All right.
I don't think we need to know. There's one no. Anybody else thought you know? So, I'm sure that was Dr. Koschko.
Yes.
Okay, got it.
Motion carried.
Move to grant the administration permission to advertise for bids for those items and projects requiring competitive bidding according to statute and appearing in the 2014-15 school year budget as well as the current construction budget.
Second.
Second by Mr. Patruci.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no?
Move to authorize the administration to pay all end-of-year invoices which are part of the 2013-14 school district operations and were included in the current budget and to make end-of-year budgetary transfers.
Second. Second by Mr. New.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no? Motion carried.
Move that the following banks be named depositories for the 2014-15 school year for the accounts as listed below.
Second question.
Second by Dr. Ture. Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no? Motion carried.
Move to authorize the administration to make payments amounted to $10,117.50 for credits earned by professional employees in accordance with a negotiated agreement. The list as presented to the board showing the individual payments due will be filed with the official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Second by Mr. Patruci.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no? Motion carried.
Move to assign $2,432,000 of fund balance for future retirement and or building project expenses.
Second. Second by Dr. Ture.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no? Motion carried.
Move to approve the expenditures for the month of May 2014 for the high school renovation project according to the schedule as listed.
Second by Mr. New.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no? Motion carried.
Move to award the bid for gasoline and diesel fuel for the 2014-15 school year. Per the school district's quantity request to the following vendors in the Westmore and Interim Unit Joint Purchasing Consortium for fuel has identified as the lowest responsible bidder's meeting or equaling specifications. Petroleum traders for gasoline 87 octane at a fixed rate of 2.9893 per gallon, imports petroleum for diesel fuel at a fixed rate of 3.0217 per gallon.
Second by Mr. New.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no? Motion carried.
That is all, Madam President.
Okay, what about number two? Excuse me one moment.
Number two, you can do number two.
All right, who's gonna, who's reading? Mr. Leonard's saying?
It would be me.
Go ahead.
Skip one.
Skip one and go to two.
Go to two.
Okay.
We'll move number, item one to the last item on the agenda after the previous.
Just direct me where I need to go.
Just go to number two for now.
Move to approve the owner-controlled insurance program, OCIP, for the high school renovations at an estimated cost of $590,455. This will include workers' compensation, general liability, and umbrella excess liability.
Second. Second by Mr. New.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no? Motion carried.
Move to employ Adam McCord as summer grounds help at $8 an hour effective May 27, 2014.
Second.
Second by Mr. Patruci.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote.
Madam President, I apologize. I do have one question with regards to the OCS. Could you explain that to me, why when those folks doing the work are not our employees, that we are taking out, is it an additional insurance policy?
No. It, what happens is, instead of the contractors including insurance in their bid, we take responsibility for all the insurance, and then we have control over it. So, if there are conflicts, we are managing the entire program. And it really comes as a savings over what would have been bid by the contractors.
Is that a, in the other life I'm in, I'm not familiar with that. Is that a recommendation? Is that a recommendation that the state puts out for school district projects that, or is it just because it was an opportunity for saving doing it?
Well, the PA School Board Association recommends that school districts enter the program. So, I mean, you can go either way, but they recommend for school districts.
Just asking.
And I think if you ask, Dan can comment further.
In my opinion, the two biggest things that makes OSHA a valuable consideration for the school district are, one, they have a mandated safety program that all the primes are required to have buy into this one comprehensive safety program. They have safety inspectors that come out because they're all tied to the same concern plan. So the safety is a very robust safety program. Number two, it eliminates all finger pointing. If there is, say, a, say, the plumber installs the sewer and then the general contractor drills through the sewer and pumps it full of concrete, you, in order to get resolution, would have to have the plumber and the general contractor's insurance company fight it out. In this case, they're all under one umbrella, so there is no fighting. You just get, you just get paid for it.
So I would, I would guess, on the other end during the bid package, that we see reduced...
Yeah, we had the bidder submit their bids without those insurance costs.
What typically is the savings, vice versa? I'm not familiar with this methodology in my mind.
We saw it at Nacero when we bid the Penn Hills project. We saw that the OSHA would actually save the owner about eight percent. And it's only really on the big packages, so steel and some of the others that were, there's real money. The guy that's putting in the toilet partitions probably didn't give you any money back, but you weren't going to really get, you know, you really weren't going to get anything anyhow.
Yeah. Thank you. Thanks, Brett.
Sure. You're welcome.
Okay. All right, so we were voting on Adam McCourt, correct?
Yes.
Okay, the questions being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor, the motions say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no? Motion carried.
Move to employ the following custodian to be assigned with the administration. Friends' benefits will be provided according to negotiated agreements. New employment is continued upon the receipt of all necessary documentation and acceptance of Act 34, 151, and 114 waivers from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania within thirty days. Ron Greenowal, Trafford Schools at a rate of fourteen-nine an hour effective June 23, 2014.
Second.
Second by Mr. Petrusi.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor, the motions say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no? Motion carried.
Madam President, is that it for me?
Looks like that right now.
That is all then, Madam President.
All right, thank you, Mr. Katsik. Mr. Niemack, employee relations, negotiations, and transportation.
I have nothing tonight, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Niemack. Dr. Trey, food service.
Don't report, Madam President.
Thank you, Dr. Trey. Mr. Petrusi, personnel and curriculum.
Thank you, Madam President. Move to approve additional substitute teaching and support personnel for the month of June 2014.
Second.
Second by Mr. Katsik.
Question.
Question being called for. All in favor, the motions say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no? Motion carried.
Move to approve tentative assignments of professional personnel as presented by the superintendent for 2014-15 school year. The assignments, for the most part, are recommended by the principals. Final assignments will be reviewed and approved by the board prior to the deadline date of August 18, 2014.
Second.
Second by Mr. Katsik.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor, the motions say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no? Motion carried.
Move the following school physician and dentist for Penn Trafford School District 2014 school year. Dr. Kevin Wong is salary seventeen thousand, five-hundred. Dr. Barakya Backshee, three dollars per student, and Dr. Thomas Gates, dentist, two-fifty per student.
Second.
Second by Mr. Katsik.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor, the motions say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no? Motion carried.
Move to accept the official range for instructional personnel for 2013-14 school year as determined by the principals and superintendent.
Second.
Second by Mr. Katsik.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor, the motions say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no? Motion carried.
Move to extend some of the contracts of following personnel for 2014 school year as recommended by superintendent. Salary is determined in accordance with negotiated agreement as listed.
Second.
Second by Mr. Katsik.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor, the motions say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no? Motion carried.
Move to approve the following extracurricular science for a district's high school summer instrumental music program for the 2014-15 school year. New employment is contingent upon the receipt of all necessary documentation excepted to Act 34, 151, 114 waivers from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania within thirty days as listed.
Second.
Second by Mr. New.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor, the motions say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no? Motion carried.
Move to authorize administration to post-advertise interview candidates for any vacancies that occurs prior to August meeting.
Second.
Second by Mr. New.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor, the motions say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no? Motion carried.
This is the second biggest motion going to be today, tonight. Move to employ Anthony Quilio as a high school principal effective July 1, 2014, at annual salary one-hundred-twenty thousand dollars. He'll be entitled to all benefits outlined in administrative compensation plan. Employees contingent upon the receipt of the signed contract not later than Wednesday, June 25, 2014, and subsequent receipt of all necessary certification, documentation, and acceptance of Act 34, 151, and 114 waivers from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. New.
Question.
And I do have a question.
Yeah, I do have a comment.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Petrusi. Just say a job well done, Scott. I don't think we could have done it without you. Fabulous work, and he's got some big shoes to fill.
He's a good guy, and I think, I think you're all going to really like him.
But thank you for your service.
Appreciate that. Thank you, man.
We look forward to having him full-time as assistant superintendent.
That's correct.
Yeah. I look forward to it, too.
Welcome to the fray.
And just for a little background for the public, you know, there's not much public care, but his first seven years, he taught special education. In his most recent years, he was assistant principal at Gateway High School, then I think his past five years, he was principal...
Three at Gateway.
Three, assistant of three, then what, five years is...
He was four assistant at Gateway High School, and three as head principal at the middle school.
Middle school, is right. And were they going to hold them to sixty days, you know it all, Mr. Dr. Harris?
He hasn't discussed his release plan yet.
Okay, all right. Let the board...
He actually would be here tonight. He's in Florida.
Okay, all right. All right, question on the motion.
Madam President. He's very excited, all coming. I'm very glad he's coming as well, so thanks, the board, for making a good hire.
Thank you. When you find out what his release plan is, when he would be coming on board, can you let us know?
As always.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, any other questions, comments? Okay, questions being, question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor, the motions say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no? Motion carried.
Move to employ the following professional employees effective August 18, 2014, to teaching areas of their respective certification and assigned by the administration. Employees contingent upon the receipt of the signed contract not later than Wednesday, June 25, 2014, and subsequent receipt of all necessary certification, documentation, and acceptance of Act 34, 151, 114 waivers from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Rachel Colick, B4, salary forty-five thousand, seven-fifty-seven. Amanda Rogers, M13, sixty thousand, two-hundred-and-sixty-seven dollars. Samantha Soraki, M4, forty-six thousand, three-sixty-seven. And Sharon Fizloski, M9, fifty-two thousand, seven-hundred-and-ninety-seven dollars.
I can just take a minute. Actually, most of the ladies are either out of state or in Florida, right? Everyone's in Florida. Rachel's actually coming from Willen Hills. She will be taking over the life skills room at Level Green Elementary School. Amanda Rogers is actually coming from Gateway Middle School as well. She's dual-certified in French and Spanish. We are adding middle school languages to our eighth-grade curriculum at Trafford Middle and Penn Middle School, so I'd like to thank the board for adding foreign languages. That's one of the non-negotiable goals that you added, so thank you for fulfilling that and adding foreign languages to our middle school. Samantha Soraki is actually teaching at the high school. She's teaching chemistry, biology, and she'll be teaching a new course you also added, forensic science. So thank you for incorporating that course into the high school. And Sharon Filoski, she's actually teaching Spanish at the middle school, and so, and she's actually coming from Seneca Valley as well as Jeanette Middle School. And she's been one of our teachers who actually taught, she had a creative name for that course. What does she teach years, she taught many years, young...
After-school extracurricular Spanish program at the moment.
Right, for Spanish, some of your kids might have had it.
It's called Spanish Tutoring.
Spanish Tutoring, but she came up with such a clever, many years she volunteered and taught Spanish for our kids, and she came up with a nice name for her Spanish club, but I can't think of it right now, but she's been with us forever, so you might have recognized the name. So great hires tonight, and I know we have a lot of experience coming to our district, but you're getting the best, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
All right.
Second.
Okay.
Of course, I said that before you approved it.
All right, question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor, the motions say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no? Motion carried.
Move to employ Elizabeth Rickby as occupational therapist effective Monday, August 18, 2014. The annual contract is for one-hundred-and-eighty-six days, annual salary forty-five thousand dollars. She'll be entitled to all benefits outlined in administrative compensation plan. Employment is contingent upon the receipt of all signed contract not later than Wednesday, June 25, 2014, and subsequent receipt of all necessary certification, documentation, and acceptance of Act 34, 151, 114 waivers from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
Second.
Second by Mr. Katsik.
Question.
Question being called for. Any questions? Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor, the motions say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no?
And I also want to, I know she's not here tonight, but you're also with the savings, Greg, how much is this actually saving the money that you're actually hiring our own occupational therapists?
They're a hundred thousand dollars.
This is how much you're saving the district? So thank you for not only hiring a good occupational therapist, thank you for saving the money for the district.
Will we save it, will we save it a hundred or are we saving a bit?
No, we're saving a hundred thousand. We paid out to the IU probably a hundred and forty-eight thousand for an OT part-time in a Coda, which is assistant. We paid like ninety-six thousand for it, so we're saving over a hundred thousand.
Are we going to have an assistant or not?
At this time, though, her case level would be thirty-three. Other districts that have their OTs usually go up to around sixty, so right now, there's not a need for it.
And based on the Spanish teacher that you're also hiring, he's also looking into getting, we're also looking into the dual-certified and saving money from our ESL that you're spending, too. So we are, like I said, we are doing every effort on our part to keep the money coming.
Well, I thank you for, Dr. Harris, for expanding on that, and Greg, nice job. It's just an example of what we're doing. We're looking at everything to try to save money for increasing taxes.
All right, question being, I think we had a second.
All right, question.
Okay, I thought so.
Is there a second, Mr. Niemack?
We already voted.
Oh, I thought so.
I just want to extend this meeting as long as I can.
I can't believe everything's running together.
It is running together. All right.
I don't have to get a word in.
I do, though, okay?
Okay.
Number eleven, that's incorrect.
We did approve that, right?
Brett says we did.
Yes, we did.
Move to accept the following resignations. Brenda Haas, Library Sunrise Elementary School, and she just resigned, and that was a retired resignation. Celeste Blissimo, kindergarten teacher, McCall Elementary School.
Second.
Second by Mr. New.
Question.
Question being called for. All in favor, the motions say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no? Motion carried.
Move to approve the following books for the 2014-15 school year on its textbook budget according to the textbook cycle as listed.
Second.
Second by Mr. Katsik.
Question.
Okay, question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor, the motions say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no? Motion carried.
I move to approve the following conference request. The following administrators are scheduled to attend the Apple Executive Briefing July 22nd and 23rd at Reston, Virginia. The cost of the district will be $1,000 each reimbursement for three vehicles as listed there. Then Eric Rieger, AP Physics, 1 and 2 Morgantown, West Virginia for June 17th to 20th, 2014, in preparation for AP Physics course to be added to 2015-16 school year. The total cost effective for the district is $1,176.20. And Matthew Harris, Mass Customized Learning System in Portland, Maine from July 11th to July 16th, 2014. The cost of the district is $935.
Second.
Question by Mr. Noel.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. On fere, the motion say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, no? Motion carried.
Move to approve the following leave request. Barbara Clark, Custodian at Penn Middle School. Patty Mens, Custodian at Penn Middle School. And Tammy Yaklich, Penn Trafford School English Teacher.
Second.
Second by Mr. Katsas.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. On fere, the motion say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, no? Motion carried.
That's all I have, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Peruzzi. Mr. Noel, Policy Public Relations Legislative Title II.
Thank you, Madam President. Move to accept the filed minutes of Superintendent's Information Committee meeting held on Monday, May 5th, 2014.
Second.
Second by Mr. Katsas.
Question.
Question being called for. On fere, the motion say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, no? Motion carried.
Move to continue the resolution adopted on June 14th, 1979, providing for a change in the roll call procedures for matters as outlined in Section 451 of the Public School Code, 1949 during the 2014-15 school year. A copy of the resolution was filed with the June 14th, 1979 Board Minutes.
Second.
Question by Mr. Peruzzi.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. On fere, the motion say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, no? Motion carried.
Moves to continue the bond coverage for the Secretary of the Board of School Directors, Mr. Brodego, and the Assistant Secretary of the Board of School Directors, Mrs. Janice Oliver, in the amount of $50,000 for the 2014-15 school year.
It's never enough.
You said that 12 consecutive.
Just 12? I would have said 31.
I said long before you came here.
Rich, Jason, check that again.
Uh, second by Dr. Trey.
Question.
Okay, question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. On fere, the motion say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, no? Motion carried.
Move to grant permission to the School Board members, Secretary Solicitor, and District Administrators on a case-by-case basis to attend the annual convention of the National School Boards Association, the American Association of School Administrators, or any other educational convention during the 2014-15 school year, which should be of educational or financial advantage to Penn Trafford School District. In addition, the superintendent may approve any conference or workshop for any staff member which is conducted in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. An anonymized verified statement of expenditures will be maintained in the business office and made part of the record following all conference or workshops attended.
Second.
Question. Second by Mr. Katsas.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. On fere, the motion say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, no? Motion carried.
Move to authorize administration to submit to federal programs applications such as Title I and Title II A for the 2014-15 school year.
Second.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. On fere, the motion say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, no? Motion carried.
Move to approve participation in the curriculum of Non-Instructional Resource Services Department of Westmoreland Intermediate Unit Number 7 Co-op Drug-Free Schools and Communities Act of 1986 for the 2014-15 school year.
Second.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote.
I do have a question, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Ma'am, what all does this entail? The Co-op Drug-Free and Community Acts?
For the drug-free schools and...
Is that where they come into our schools and do the training for the kids, or what's that for?
For all the community prevention programs. We are a part of St. Vincent College and all the different, all the training we do throughout the year.
Is it for staff or for the kids?
For the staff, for the training.
It's staff, then. Okay. Sorry. I didn't know if it's for kids, directed toward kids or directed toward staff.
Staff.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. On fere, the motion say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, no? Motion carried.
Move to adopt attachment A of the IDEA work BP L 108-446 rider program narrative for the 2014-15 school year as requested by the Westmoreland Intermediate Unit, Penn Trafford School District. Hereby gives notice of its adoption of Westmoreland Intermediate Units policies and procedures under the federal requirements of 34 CFR Part 300. A copy of the policies and procedures are maintained for review in the administrative offices. The IU adopted policies and procedures are implemented to fulfill the requirements of 22 PACO Chapter 14 and the regular requirements under the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act Part B. The sub-grantee has an effect policies and procedures whereby the SEA may through corrective action for failure to comply with Part B of the Act exercises general supervisory authority to withhold all directory indirect subsidies for special education and related services provided by the SEA and the public agencies with the responsibility to offer a free, appropriate public education to eligible children. I'm not even doing the brackets. That's the motion.
Second.
Second by Mr. Peruzzi.
All right, question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. On fere, the motion say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, no? Motion carried.
Move to tentatively approve revised policy 137 Home Education Programs and Administrative Regulation, and 137 AR Home Education Program requirements as submitted to the board.
Second.
Second by Mr. Katsas.
Question.
All right, I'll have a question now. Can you explain what that change is?
For the change?
Yeah, so the people now, I mean, is that for some, will all of them take some cyber school or?
Yeah, we actually made some changes where, as before, some of our students wanted to take a course during the day, and in the past, we actually didn't have our students who were receiving home education attending any of our courses during the school day. Now, our students who are receiving home education can also take a course during the school day as well.
Thank you.
We've had some students, actually this past year, it all, a couple of our students actually started wanting to take a course during the school day, and now we've actually opened it up. So, if you want to take any school courses, we had a gymnastics student who actually has taken all courses at home. They actually want to take math, or actually the opposite, they want to take some courses, so.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, questions being called for. This will be a roll call vote. On fere, the motion say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, no? Motion carried.
That's all I have, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Noel. Mr. Stovar, Taxes, Insurance, Census.
Thank you, Madam President. The administration received quotations for all sports insurance for the 2014-15 school year. All quotations were reviewed by the administration, and is recommended that all sports coverage for the 2014-15 be awarded to AG Administrators Incorporated with coverage as follows. All sports insurance plan, one premium, $10,300, $100 excess plan.
Second.
Second by Mr. Peruzzi.
All right, question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. On fere, the motion say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, no? Motion carried.
The administration received quotations for student accident insurance for the 2014-15 school year. All quotations were reviewed by the administration, and is recommended that the student accident insurance for 2014-15 be awarded to the Poli森 Insurance Company, PO Box 820, Johnston, PA with coverage as follows as listed.
Second.
Second by Mr. Katsas. Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. On fere, the motion say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, no? Motion carried.
Move to appoint Berkheimer Associates as the district delinquent tax collector for the delinquent 2013 per capita occupation residence and wage taxes. There will be no cost to the district for the collections of per capita and occupational residence taxes. The cost of collection for the wage taxes will be 10% of the amount collected for all delinquent taxes up to July 1st, 2014. For all delinquent tax taxes effective July 1st, 2014 and on, the collection rate will be the same as in effect for current taxes.
Second.
Second by Mr. Noel.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. On fere, the motion say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, no? Motion carried.
Move to adopt the Homestead and Farmstead Exclusion Resolution effective July 1st, 2014. A complete copy of the resolution will be filed with the official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Second by Mr. Peruzzi. Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. On fere, the motion say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, no? Motion carried.
Move to authorize the continuance of the following Act 511 tax resolutions and taxes for the 2014-15 school year. A complete copy of the resolutions will be filed with the official minutes of this meeting as listed.
Second.
Second by Mr. Noel.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. On fere, the motion say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, no?
Yeah.
Motion carried.
Move that the Board of School Directors adopt the following resolution. Be it resolved, and it is hereby resolved by the School Board, or the Board of School Directors of Penn Trafford School District, that there will hereby assess, levy, and impose for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2014, and ending June 30th, 2015, a tax on all real estate in the district subject to taxation at the rate, at the rate of 76.85 mils for $7, and 7.685 for each $100 of assessed valuation of taxable property. The real estate tax rate for the Allegheny County portion located in Trafford Borough will be 16.36 mils.
Second.
Question. Second by Mr. Peruzzi.
I have a question now. Brett, how's this different than the motion that was made earlier today? It seems like we're going to do it again here in another second.
Well, this is the resolution officially adopting the tax rate. In the prior motion, it's more informational in terms of how it relates to the budget.
Okay.
Go on to the next one.
If I say no again.
It is duplicational, you're right.
It just seems sort of silly.
It's a duplication.
Oh, you approved the budget, then you approved the tax payment budget.
Correct. That's correct.
Interesting. What's the third one then for?
Yeah.
Uh, this is this $5 per capita, which is under Section 679, which is different than the Act 511 that we just approved previously.
Okay. Any other questions?
I thought that would have been captured in item number five, that's why I was asking.
Yeah, the difference is because one's 511 and the other's 629, or 679 rather.
Any other questions? Okay, question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. On fere, the motion say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, no?
No.
Okay. Motion carried.
Move to adopt the following resolution. Be it resolved, and it is hereby resolved by the Board of School Directors of Penn Trafford School District, that there is hereby levied assessed and imposed for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2014, and ending June 30th, 2015, a tax under Section 679 of the Public School Code of 1949 as amended of $5 per capita on each resident or inhabitant of the school district 18 years of age or over as of July 1st, 2014, having a gross earnings of $12,000 or more. This tax shall not be applied to any person who was not subject to this tax on the first day of the fiscal year and who during the fiscal year was also a resident or inhabitant of another school district imposing a like tax. If such person shall produce and exhibit to the tax collector an official receipt of the tax collector of such other districts showing payment of said like tax for said fiscal year. This tax shall not apply to any person who does not attain or has not attained the age of 18 years of age or over on July 1st, 2014. The Board may be moved by resolution provide for complete or partial exemption based on total income as authorized by Section 679 of the Public School Board Code, 1949 as amended.
Second.
Second by Mr. Peruzzi. Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. On fere, the motion say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, no? Motion carried.
Move to approve the Local Economic Revitalization Tax Assistance Act, Lord Lerta, as presented to the Board.
Second.
Question. Mr. Peruzzi.
I have a question related to the Lerta. Do we down the line have to address Lerta any other way as far as it's applied, as far as funding collection, anything else in the process that will be, have to take some type of role in decision-making?
I don't believe so. It's the county that would...
I thought the only thing they said, I'm sorry, was that if they added additional parcels or different...
Yes.
Right, you'd have to vote on it yet, right.
Just if we add additional parcels.
Correct.
Then one is expanded.
Right. But if, if an entity builds a new facility within the Lerta that we approved, then they'll get that tax break for the period of time. But that's all administered at that point through the county.
Thank you. So, that's all I have.
All right, any other questions? All right, questions being called for. This will be a roll call vote. On fere, the motion say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, no? Motion carried.
That's all I have, Madam President.
All right, thank you, Mr. Stovar. At this time, we still have the construction to do, but this time, Mr. Lozaro, do you have anything to report as a PTEA grabber?
No, I do not, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Well, Mr. Brunglin not being here, do you have anything to report as a solicitor?
I have no reported for the time, ma'am.
All right, thank you very much. All right, at this time, I believe we're handing it over to...
Well, let me just tell you, I'm going to let Masero and Hank from Actus talk about this a little bit further, but we did open bids up on Monday afternoon, and we were, we were pleased because the bids did come under budget. The total cost of, the hard costs were $21,440,500. The soft costs associated with that was, was an additional $5,686,733. So, the total, when you combine those two numbers, the hard and soft costs, we ended up with a project cost that came in at $27,127,233. So, this is about almost $4.9 million under budget. So, that does allow us to do the alternates that we want to do. So, there are a number of alternates that we had to consider. Dr. Harris and I studied this thoroughly and looked at things. You know, the alternates came in at different prices, and when we looked at everything, our recommendation to the Board is to accept all the alternates with the exceptions of, with the exception of the stadium restrooms, because that price came in very high at seven, over $700,000. We just thought that was too much to spend on, on restrooms. And we do not want to make a recommendation to add the new stadium parking. That estimate came in at $500,000, so.
Scott, with, right here, the parking, you said just in this overall project, there should be about 200 additional parking spots.
Yeah.
That's laid out.
Assuming we do the other alternates that we are asking you to, that would give us approximately 200 additional parking spaces, some in the back where tennis courts are located, some on the side of the auditorium area, some in the bus loop, some by the annex. So, there would be additional parking in this plan. But we would recommend that you do not accept the alternate two, which is the stadium restroom, that's $700,000, over $700,000, and the new stadium parking, which is over $500,000. We do want to consider, though, later on, looking in this project to find somewhere we can address the stadium restroom issue. We believe that there are some locations on site that we might want to consider, and we want to really look at, possibly, looking at our current maintenance shed where we have our restrooms and the second area. We think that area could be renovated and turned into a nice facility there. So, that's something that we need to consider, but we would use that money, the funds that are there, we'll put that aside and enter into another project to do that. That's what we'd have to do. But those are our recommendations. As I said, we would want to do everything, the high school annex, we want to continue to move forward with the tennis courts and parking associated with that, the library skylights, the, and then the food service equipment. So, in doing all of that, that price would come out at approximately, actually, this number is firm, I hope, $31 million?
239,216.
216, that includes soft costs, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
One more time to clarify that number, please.
That number is...
Damn, loud.
That number is 31,239,216, and that includes the modifications that we made earlier in executive section with regard to the contingency and for the quality control testing estimate line items.
And that, that's hard and soft.
That is all in, hard and soft costs, yes, sir.
That excludes alternates two and four.
Understood.
And it includes, yeah, includes all other alternates except two and four.
And that's a 5%.
Yes, sir. That is a 5% contingency on base bid and all alternates.
And that 5% includes change orders.
That is for change orders, sir.
As a clarification, it also does not include that alternate three, which was to leave your existing boilers and, you're replacing your boilers.
That wasn't included in the original bid.
You're not doing all, two, three, or four.
Well, we omitted three on there, on the revision.
But depending on how you make your motion, if you say all alternates except two and four, I don't want three to be awarded.
Hank, wait.
And seven's listed, and seven's part of the original base bid cost as well, correct?
Correct.
No.
Oh, no, that's right. It was totaled, we had to do it. Sorry. Sorry, Dan, thank you.
Hank, I do have one question again with regards to the skylights. Could you just explain to me again the benefit of them? I mean, it's just under 100,000. And quite frankly, any skylight that I've been familiar with, they eventually leak.
It's really easy here because we're in a spot that's going to happen.
All right.
Everything inside here, the ceiling gets made out, and all the lights that have been into this ceiling space gets made out. There is an existing old skylight capped off, just the buzzer ceiling. That all gets removed. Now, now you've got a two-story atrium space that goes all the way up through your, your center courtyard that you have upstairs, and we put this skylight on top of the roof now. So, the skylight is not down in a hole where water comes down and has nowhere to go and leaks into your building. The skylight is up on top of the roof acting as an atrium. So, you get a two-story atrium space here that allows natural light in, allows, allows convection for the warm air to go up. So, you have less cooling, you have less electricity for lighting, and you get a, you get a natural light here, you get a large volume of space that will really help to open this library up. Because as you're sitting here, you can see it feels, it's a, it's a big space with a low ceiling, so you get a kind of enclosed dark feeling in this library. That will get rid of all that and add natural light to the space.
You're still, even if you don't put the skylight in the ceiling, you're still looking at the inside, right?
If we don't put the skylight in the ceiling, the new ceiling is going to be right where this old ceiling is, because we don't have any room to go any higher.
But you're bringing it straight across.
If you don't put the skylight in, what's... If we don't bring it straight across, the, this, this ceiling comes out, but the new ceiling goes in right where it is. So, it, it's not going to look much different than what it does now, and you're not going to have any natural light in your, in your interior space.
I have a question about the tennis courts.
Yes.
It does address all the needs that were brought to us last month, right, by the tennis courts?
Yes. We, we increased the scope to include taking the artificial turf surfacing off of the existing tennis courts and resurfacing those existing tennis courts, as well as adding two new tennis courts, new parking, and taping the section of road that gets to the new park.
Thank you. Do we make a motion at this point, or is there any more questions or any more comments, questions?
Make it comfortable with 5%, correct, contingency. You'll be well under that, right, Hank?
That's the plan.
Get you on public record.
Hank, when is Brown breaking?
Do you guys still have an idea when Brown breaks?
It's going to be, it's going to be probably the first two weeks of July. We have to, once the contract is approved, we have to meet with that low DC contractor to determine exactly what dates it will start on site. That's the beginning of July.
Who is the contractor, DC?
Lobar.
Lobar. Could you spell that for them?
L-O-B-A-R. Food service is Todd Devon. Plumbing is Grable. Mechanical is Whitby. Controls is C.S. and E. And electrical is Paul Fider. I'd also like to say that our team, along with Hank, met with all the contractors during the first part of the week, went through their scope with them. It seems on first interview with all these guys, you have a pretty strong team. Lobar is not necessarily new to the area, but they're new to work with our, both of our teams, but we have heard some decent things about them within the industry, so.
Their home base is out in Harrisburg, Harris?
Hillsburg.
Great Harrisburg, Illinois.
Yep.
Scott, you want to introduce Nate to the public?
Yeah, Nate, Nate, Nate Malloy, he's our, what's your title then?
Project Manager.
Project Manager. So, he's going to be basically, he's not going to be on site every single day, but he will be here a large part of the time to oversee the site, and he'll be communicating with administration and the contractors. They will have a site manager on, on site every single day.
Correct.
And her name is Trish.
Trish Metz.
Trish.
And then we have a project head in here, under me, Matt Nikovich, who some of you managed the last meeting, and he's more to handle some of the paperwork documentation and the, he'll be on Saturday days of the week as well. He'll be on site every day of the week as well.
This was a lot of years of prep work that went into this, and it sounds like this is a quick decision tonight, but this was many years of laboring and many nights spent, and many years of looking into what can we do, what can we do, what can we spend, many presentations. And when the bids came Monday night, it was, it was a blessing. It was a treat to see the price and whatever, everything came in for, and it was nice to see the cost and.
I want to guess, Matt, or, sorry, Dr. Harris, the initial conversation that Dr. Clowney, and correct me if I'm wrong, Nick, I think we were both on there at that time, was in the fall of two thousand nine, because I believe we, we had our first meetings in the spring. I remember that, because that's when my mother unfortunately passed away, and I just remember coming from a meeting just days before. So, it's been, you're right, a long journey until we got here, and a lot of tough decisions were made. And I commend, you know, commend everybody involved in that process.
A lot of preparation.
It's very exciting, and it's, but a lot of hard work to get to that point.
One thing I could say is this, this project addresses all of our academic needs, all of our needs in the arts, and all of our needs in the athletics. This is not a project that we're not overspending here and, and purchasing things that we don't need. And I could tell you from my perspective, I believe, as, as an educator working here for all these years, these are things that we truly need. We're not overspending, we're not buying things that aren't, aren't necessary. And it's really going to, really going to enhance the, the high school experience here for the kids. So, I look forward to it, and I thank you for your support, and hopefully we can move forward with this.
And it's great news, too, to, to, to be able to tell the public at least we're able to stay to thirty-two.
So, when's it going to be done? It will be done August of two thousand sixteen, correct? So, we should be ready for that school year.
Matt, I do have a question, though. We have a contingency in there of approximately one point and change, as well as we've come under our original cap number of thirty-two. Does that money, from a savings perspective, get allocated to building projects only? I wonder if Brett stepped out.
It would have to be building.
Yeah.
It would have to be building.
So, it'll sit in, in some fund, whether, but it's for building projects only.
If you want to do something, yeah.
I mean, I just want to make sure.
Restrooms, or you want to do a roof or something, yes.
There's also the possibility, too, correct me if I'm wrong, that we could reduce the amount that we actually borrow.
You can always go that route.
Correct.
You can always do that, but also do building things.
I just want everybody to know that is an option.
It's always an option.
Once we fund the additional cost for, for the choices of the restroom.
But looking around us, looking around the buildings, trust me, we, we can find ways to spend that.
Was the amount borrowed based off of estimated project costs or estimated mileage that was available from rolling off debt?
I think it was that.
We did it based on what we was rolling off and what the.
I would just throw a cautionary note that if you, if you don't reborrow that amount, you're effectively reducing your current mileage available.
Bruce, I thought it had a lot to do with just the years that we looked at that last one.
It's still seventeen and a half years, that's not changed.
But that's a good, that's a good point to Bruce May, just to make, you want to clarify that again.
If you lower the borrowing amount, you effectively have lowered the current mileage
available, because that money will get drawn into the general budget, as far as we're all sitting here. And, you know, we're, we're having hard discussions about trying to fund Peasars and operating budgets, and Nick wants buildings, and future mileage is going to always be a battle. I, I would hate to see us reduce our current mileage through that decision.
You want to give the future boards the same amount that we had to work with?
I think you're going to get that, and I think, I don't see any excess.
No, that's a good, that's a good point, though.
It's good, it's worth mentioning.
It could be a sizable amount if, if Ang's due diligence came in.
But you want to also have the prioritizing and everything we did ahead of time, when we ranked the annex and we ranked everything coming into this, and we made a difference.
Yeah, Quade High School, no.
Just, I would like to direct a question to Mr. Breako. Just a quick off the cuff, what would you anticipate this building being totally renovated and free up on some of your maintenance budget for some of the other facilities? Do you anticipate that? Oh, sure, absolutely. I mean, for me to give you a dollar amount off the, off the cuff, it's very difficult, but it's definitely going to, you know, it's definitely going to help. So, this, this will help you reallocate funds to some of the other facilities? Absolutely.
I'd be really interested to see what kind of savings you generate with new efficient lighting, boilers, all the new equipment you're putting in. I'd be really interested to see, and maybe that would be a good math project for some senior advanced math students to see, you know, how it's trended from two thousand and nine till, you know, say, the end of this full year, and then once the, the project is done in sixteen, see how it trends forward and see what kind of savings that will.
And not only the savings in the lighting and the, and the boilers and things, but also in the controls, not, with the updated controls, you have more control over your systems and be able to save more money that way.
What about grant money? Were you able to apply and secure any grant money? I mean, your programs, the rebate type programs, I guess would be a, maybe a better word?
You're, you're, you already applied for your lighting, got your lighting rebates, you did work in your building for your lighting rebates. So, that was, that was pretty much used up, that was the one thing that we worked.
But I thought we found another one a few months ago that they had, we had not used yet. Five twenty-nine or something like that.
I think we need to look at it.
Yeah. I just want to make sure.
I'm sorry. What, what do we need to do that last one?
We can do it at any time, but probably, given the market rates being what they are, it's better to do it sooner rather than later. We should probably plan for that in August, at least give them authorization to go to market when they sense the timing's right.
We can't do it now, huh?
We, we can't do it now because we didn't give them the authorization to do it. But I did talk to, to our monitor yesterday. He said the market is still favorable. It should be favorable for the next couple of months unless something really happens geopolitically that would throw the markets into a tizzy. But actually, it's been helping us right now, because money's flowing back into the market, which means rates are going down.
Bidders?
Yes.
Tony, we also, we need to approve a construction engineering consultant to. Yeah. We have to prove somebody to do inspections and testing for this project, so I have a motion here. If I can let Scott read it.
Sure. But we also need to do the motion that awards the bids.
Yes.
And are you, are you prepared to do that this time?
Hold on, Mr. Kachas, he's on his way back.
Did you volunteer him before he, while he was gone?
This is his part, right? He's going to, Mr. Leonard.
Okay.
I tried to stall him as long as.
Hey, Jim, I see you have.
All right, we're ready to get to it.
Hold on a second.
I mean, does anybody else, you know, I don't want to rush through this, but does anybody else have any questions, concerns that they want to discuss before we move forward? Okay. Okay, let's do it, Phil. Mr. Kachas.
I'd like to say something just real quick, since I was here for the last.
Move to author.
I want to congratulate this board. Excellent job. I mean, no tax increase. You're getting almost a brand-new high school, very modern, Quade facility. Hats off to all you people. You worked hard at it. Everybody was concerned about the kids first, community second, and when it finished project, I think everybody would be well satisfied. But till that time, there's going to be some aggravation, but when it's all over, it's very gratifying. But great job to everybody. Speaking from senior boardroom receipt, that's all.
Yeah, and administration did a great job. We had.
Everybody on this table.
Prefer iterations of the design.
Very dedicated people.
Yes, everybody from the top.
Okay, that's all.
Okay, Mr. Kachas.
Move to author. I'm very happy to be able to read this motion. Move to authorize the Penn Trafford School District to enter into a mutual written agreement with the lowest responsible bidders as listed below, where all specifications were met and the amounts indicated for the construction bid at Penn Trafford High School. Bids were opened in a public session on Monday, June sixteenth, two thousand fourteen, at one P M. at the administration building. Project total was thirty-one, uh, yeah, project total, including hard and soft costs, thirty-one million, two hundred and thirty-nine dollars and, two hundred and thirty-nine dollars, two hundred and sixteen. And that includes alternates one, five, six, seven, and eight.
Second.
Second by Mr. Patrici.
Question.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried. Four and a half years later, we've done it. So, we started.
We planned well. You knew that they were, you knew they were expiring, it was planned perfectly.
Yep, this start, this project started before Rich and I were on the board.
Good vision, good vision.
Before we got elected.
Madam President, I have, there's one more.
Okay, yeah, right, I'm sorry.
I just said, may I have a motion? Sorry, wait.
No, go ahead.
Yeah.
May I have a motion to move to enter into contract with the construction engineering consultants for inspection and testing services associated with the high school building project?
Second by Mr. Newell.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried. Do I have, it's been a long night.
Hey, Tony, just a second till we get a clarification from the solicitor.
No.
Okay, never mind, we're good. We just want to make sure the motion I read was going to be sufficient.
I just had a question on all the alternates, but I got an answer.
Okay.
Make sure it's official.
All right. Are we all good?
All good.
All right, do I have a motion for adjournment?
Motion.
All right.
Second if needed.
This meeting is adjourned at eight forty-four P M. on June nineteenth. Two thousand fourteen, see you in August. Have a nice summer.